This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. But to God, we're thankful that you've given us another day. We thank you for life. We thank you for the opportunity. To seek your face, we ask you that your hand be involved with all decisions that are made on behalf of the citizens of Gadsden. We ask that our intentions, our motives, and our actions be pleasing in your sight, that they may serve all to the benefit of humanity as we continue each step seeking better opportunities to better ourselves. Together, we can make a great community, a great state, a great nation, and a great world. As always, we keep you first and foremost, and all we do, these things, we will be able to grateful, happy, and thankful. In the name of your Son Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put your fold back down.
We've got a group today.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee work sessions and city council meeting held on June 9th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 5th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
How to Jennifer Grace or someone from DHR? Is here? Anybody? Okay.
Whereas Gadsden's elderly and senior adults are valued members of our society, the number of aged citizens is growing and the incidence of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of those adults is outpacing the growth of the population. Such elder abuse is a significant and complex social and health problem that impacts all cultural, social, economic, and demographic groups. Combating the mistreatment of elderly and senior adults will help improve their quality of life and will allow them to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our city. Gadsden's elderly and senior adults have a right to live free of abuse, neglect, exploitation, and to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to be valued members of this community. The City of Gadsden, the Council on Aging of Etowah County, the Adult Service Program of the Etowah County Department of Human Resources, and many other social service agencies are committed to working closely with community partners to protect and provide the needs for our aged citizens. Whereas the City of Gadsden and the Council on Aging of Etowah County are committed to serving aged populations by supporting programs and services for community needs including public education. The protection of Gadsden's elderly and senior adults is an interest of all and further as to the well-being of our city. Therefore, I Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the City of Gadsden and encourage all our citizens to raise awareness of elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Grace, the Executive Director from the Council on Aging, and I'm honored to be here today. It has been a decade that the Council on Aging, along with the Department of Human Resources, has made this community aware of elder abuse. And so it's kind of a milestone for us, for 10 years, it's a long time, but we continue to fight it each day. Every day, 10,000 people turn 65. And as the baby boomers continue to rise, in 2030, it seems a long way away, but 20% of our community will be elder citizens. And so then with those statistics, the elder abuse is going to increase. So to make the community aware, this is why we have the summit each year. Our summit is tomorrow, June 17th, at the Senior Activity Building, from 9:00 to 1:00. We'd love to have everybody join us. And we have several speakers so that our senior citizens will know by the time they leave, the ways to notice people being abused, or if they're being abused, make them aware, educate them, and then hopefully they'll know the protocol so they won't be afraid to call adult protective services to report an incident. A lot of our seniors, unfortunately, are just too afraid to call. One out of every 10 seniors are victims, but that one senior, 23 of them, do not report the situation. So we're hoping that we can rectify that with our mission on to continue to fight and make people aware of elder abuse in our community. So I'm asking you, the theme this year is "One Person, One Action, One Nation, United Together Against Elder Abuse." So I'm asking you today if you would be a part of that with us and continue to make our community aware so that our seniors can be safe in this community.
I'm Renita Davis. I'm also the Supervisor at Etowah County DHR. Our Director is Teresa Sals. And I have three of four workers that's present. I would like to ask them to stand. That's Michellea Brooks, Joanne Mitchell, and Jason Doyle. If you know of any senior that's being abused, please call us at (549) 4100, and we will investigate it. Thank you.
Do you want to take this? Do you have any hours? Do you have it? I think she wants to talk to you.
I will say before I read this other one, I've said this before, but I like to say it on TV. When I was in the real estate appraisal business, I've seen many, many, many times where people, especially if they live by themselves, they would pay a contractor or somebody for a roof job up front, or a driveway, or cut down some trees. They'd pay them up front, and they never came back. Never came. I'm talking $10,000, $20,000, $30,000. And the word you should do, if they don't have enough money to do the job before you pay them, don't hire them. So please keep that in mind, and anybody who has older people living around them, or relatives, or whatever, you need to stay in touch with them because there's a lot of con games going on. And they certainly take advantage of the elderly.
Floyd Donald. Donald here?
This is the man who has the radio voice, I can tell you. On January 31st, 1865, Congress passed the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery throughout all of the United States and areas subject to its jurisdiction. The Amendment was necessary because the Emancipation Proclamation Act did not outlaw slavery throughout the nation, but only the 11 states that seceded from the Union. June 19th, 1865, was the day that the message of freedom reached Texas African-Americans. This is where the popular name "Juneteenth" for June 19th comes from. Whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share a common commitment in respect for freedom. Gadsden's annual Juneteenth commemoration is a celebratory event coordinated in a collaborative manner with leadership and resources provided by WMGJ Radio in the City of Gadsden, Etowah County. The Etowah County Commission, the Alabama Department of Mental Health, FORMLL, Etowah County Substance Abuse Advisory Council, NAMI, got all these big words like mayonnaise. Etowah, Gadsden, SADD, Chapter, CED, Mental Health Center, Quality of Life, Inc., Gadsden Treatment Center, NAACP, Restoration, Inc., Community Action of Etowah County, Searl Dental, Council on Aging, First Call, For Help, United Way, Region T-310 Board, and many other social service agencies, and all of those that came before us to establish unity, freedom, wellness, and love in our community. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim June 20th, 2015, is Juneteenth in the City of Gadsden and urge all citizens to learn more about our common past, to better understand the experiences that continue to shape our nation.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Donald? Shout you? Do you have to?
Well, on behalf of Mr. Donald, Floyd Donald, WMGJ Radio, the community, we are looking forward to celebrating the 29th Annual Citywide and Countywide Observation of Juneteenth. The past is prologue. We acknowledge the past. No action can be taken regarding the past. So the opportunity here is the future. And as you've heard, many public service organizations will be participating with Juneteenth. It's an opportunity for people to come and get information that they otherwise don't get on a regular basis. This is an opportunity for people to find out how they can be of service and how they can be benefited by what's available throughout the city and the county. This is an opportunity for people to come together in fellowship and brotherhood and truly demonstrate the spirit of Christianity. This is an opportunity for people to come out with their friends, their families, and we are particularly focused on the youth. Our spectrum of amenities, our spectrum of entertainment, various activities are all family and youth-oriented. So we are looking forward to the community to come out and support. And of course, this will be held at Carver Campus on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Festivities will begin officially at noon, but the gates will be open to the public. Benders can come down and set up. So we would like to thank the city again and the county for their support. And we are looking forward to as many of our representatives here to be there also. And this will be Saturday, the 20th. And we are looking forward to everything that you can do to help us make this a success. So on behalf of the radio station, Mr. Donald, thanks, guys.
Thank you to both WMGJ Radio and their sponsoring and coordinating of the Juneteenth activities. And as always, thank you to the Council on Aging for their tireless work as relates to elder advocacy. Really appreciate it. And I think they know they're one of my favorite organizations, and it's because they do a very good work, and we really appreciate that. You know, one of the things I will highlight, and it's not something we're proud of to see in our community, but we saw a very high-profile case of elder abuse play out potentially with the late BB King. And so it strikes us at all levels of our society, and it's something we need to be mindful of. As the Mayor recommended, I think it's important for us to check in on our elder relatives and friends and those in our community to make sure they're not being taken advantage of. All right. Unfinished business? We have none today. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 110 North 21st Street in District 1, the State of Alabama, Marvin and Alan Cone, and the estate of Millie Veezy Dolman being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in September of last year, I'm sorry, 2013. There have been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1503 Paradise Avenue in District 1, the State of Alabama, Sandra Diane Hauser Montgomery, and Aetna Finance Company being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of this year. There have been no permits to make any improvements. There have been none, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 309 Lake Street in District 2, Ira H. Hand III being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started our process in June of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
So we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1405 Stroud Avenue in District 2, Mary B. Kennedy and Toni L. Kennedy being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on recent permits and recent developments and improvements to the property, we're asking for this case to be tabled for 30 days.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
I move to table it for 30 days.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 624 Spring Street in District 3, the State of Alabama, and the estate of Belinda Denny being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 534 South 6th Street in District 5, John Snyder being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September involving a burned house. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2100 Hill Avenue in District 6, Leon Brown and Brenda Brown being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Could you come to the microphone, please? Please state your name and address first.
My name is Teresa Smith. It's 302 South 21st Street. It's directly across from it. This is my mother.
My husband Brenda Brown. It's 2100 Hill Avenue. My husband passed away, and I couldn't stay there for the first year. So I've been trying to get it fixed up, and it's just the outside of the yard, and that's all I know about. And then we cut down trees and everything. We've been trying to get it straight.
As far as I know, I don't know of any permits we're supposed to get, if there is. If y'all could tell us what permit we need. As far as I can understand, it was just like it was growed up, like overgrowth, is everything what they wanted. And she's been living with me since my dad died, but she's fixing to try to get back in it.
That's what it's patients do.
Because we've been trying to, you know, clear out all that overgrowth and cut down things, and I know she's got to put on a couple of screens, but there's not a whole lot left that we need to do. So that's how we're coming.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else you want to say?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Just I want to move back in. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case started in July of last year. There was an occupant attempting to live in this residence that did not have water available to the property. So we sent the occupant a letter to vacate the property in accordance with the law. There have been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve. And I understand that's a general procedure of the council. Since Councilman Cannon is not present today, this is his district. I would assume this case will be tabled for seven days. During that time, I will get with the owner, and also I'll get Mr. Cannon, and we'll have a new recommendation next week. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to table seven days.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Do they understand that you'll probably need to see Mr. Harbison after the meeting, and he'll talk to you about the table? Can you hear him?
Ma'am, you'll need to see Mr. Harbison after the meeting, and that's him sitting in the front there. Okay. Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates. This is for engineering services, including plans and specifications for resurfacing Vandale Boulevard from Hickory Street to Forest Avenue, and the amount is $29,805. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Are we going to pay this, or is this something the state's doing? We got to pay 20%. Go ahead.
This is an MPO project that's required to pay 20% of this total amount, and the total of that will be $5,961.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for the adoption of resolution approving the issuance of special event retail license for the Barbarian Challenge that would take place on June 20th.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This is an event that's put on by, well, parks and recreation, but it's the Barbarian Challenge, and I believe it'll take place starting Saturday at the Falls to be a good event, but they need some retail license, so this is what we're approving for the Barbarians in the Barbarian Challenge.
Any additional discussion?
Yes. Councilman Worthy and I went up and attempted to walk part of that Barbarian Challenge, and it is a Barbarian Challenge. We almost needed oxygen when we come out from up there, but it was a, you've got to be a Barbarian to do that.
All right. Is there any additional discussion?
The first one we had, I went up there and rode around and watched them in a golf cart because I thought, you know, I might try to do that. And then I had another thought that beat that one up, so I've never been in it. But it is a lot of fun. It's a big crowd. It's really grown a lot in the last few years, and everybody seems to have a good time and enjoy it.
Okay. There's no other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a resolution, 199. It's a resolution to declare nine iPad 2s and Bluetooth keyboards as a surplus property and donate them to the Gadsden Etowah Patriot Association, two of them, and the other seven to CDP 2000, as to unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor?
No, we just are continuing our cleanup through all the districts, and we hadn't got in your district yet, we will be soon. So, you know, the majority of the people want it cleaned up as well as the council and myself, and it cuts down on crime, property values, just a number of things. So, we want you to help us get on board, and let's get this place cleaned up. We've hired extra people for this summer, probably around 30 or 40, I guess, to weed eat, cut grass, and do a number of different things. And we want to keep it going. We got the recycling is really, really going good, so we want everybody to work with us, and let's try to make our city look better, and it should be more appealing to people, and safer.
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes. In keeping with the Council on Aging and with adults, I had an opportunity this morning to have breakfast at the McGuffey's Rehab, and they were entertaining community and partners at the rehab. But it's just nice to think about people that I've had a saying that was said to me, out of sight, out of mind. And so, sometime when we go to nursing homes, or we're putting nursing homes, then we're forgotten about. So, it's always good to remember aging is a beautiful thing. Some may think it's not, but it is, because with age sometimes comes wisdom, come experience. So, just if you don't have family, or if you do have family in nursing homes, or always visit them. Thank you.
Councilman Epplels? Councilman Worthy?
Yes, sir. I just have one thing. It sort of hurt me a little bit. I read over the weekend where we had a survey done, and the city of Gaston was voted the worst place to live in the state of Alabama. But I don't believe that's true. But I was going to get with the mayor, and I haven't got with him yet, because they've beaten us up pretty bad on social media. Do we have a social media policy where we can go over there and, what it is, is people don't know, they don't have the information?
That's true. I think that was an old survey. They took a picture of a building that's been remodeled since then. But I gave some statistics, and I've got paperwork on all that, so I'm thinking about contacting those people. But, you know, in the state of Alabama, in a lot of different categories, economic development, we're usually number two or three out of the whole state, not the top 10. But we're in the top 10, and the reason being, from 2007 to '12, we were in real high marks among all the cities. The only ones that usually beat us is University, Tuscaloosa's got a university, and Auburn's got a university, and sometimes Florence, which has a major university. But we're ahead of all the rest of the cities in just about every category, and we're the only city, I think, in, I know in the state, it might have been even in the southeast region, our average wage has gone up 24 months in a row. And that's one of the reasons I try not to look at Facebook stuff, because, you know, you can get on there and say anything.
One thing to note also is that the mayor and I were looking at the data, and it's not accurate on many counts. They noted that the unemployment rate was 8.3%. Our unemployment rate hasn't been that high in about five or six years, since 2006 easily. So, you just kind of have to, you know, I always say, deal with facts and data and follow wind, not air.
Right. But we got to be able to get the information to these people. Like, I talk about it every week. We have over 2500 jobs within a 25-hour mile radius of Gaston. So, all you have to do is go to the Career Center and put your application on file. There's jobs for every skill level. You know, you don't have to have a four-year degree. People just have to get out there and try. That's all I wanted to say.
I'm going to get with Brian Cox. He does a Gaston, city of Gaston website. You can put all the information I got in there.
And Councilman Worthy and I had a conversation after last week's meeting, and one thing that you have to note, that in this day and age, and this is particularly important for young people, my grandfather used to talk about having gotten dressed that morning, gone out looking for work, and by the time he had returned home that day, he had already worked an eight-hour shift. And, you know, those were, that was a time when that was possible. Nowadays, if you walk out of your house without a set of transferable skills, the prospect of you finding work is going to be very, very difficult. And, you know, it's okay to get upset at an elected official because it's that way, but the reality is that the prospects of anyone without a set of transferable skills finding work are dim. So, it's important that our young people understand that it's, you've got to get out there and establish yourself, whether it be the academic track, or whether it be a career tech or vocational track. You've got to go out and get a set of skills that are transferable and that you can market, and it's just that simple. Councilman Billingsley?
Yes. Last week, Councilman Worthy and I went up to the Falls. There are so many things up there that I didn't realize that they had. You know, miniature golf, soccer fields, walking trails, bike trails. So, there's something for everybody to do in this town, but you have to get up and do them. They're not going to come to you. And the parks and recreation must be committed for the many things that they attempt to do, like the Barbarian Challenge. You know, in the world, I could do that thing, but it's here for people that like to do that. Everybody doesn't like to do that. So, there are many opportunities for things for citizens to do. And a lot of people from out of town come to Gaston and spend money. And also on the cleanup. They've been in my district for a while, and they've done a lot of work. Of course, you can sit outside and watch the grass grow. Now, it rains one day, and the grass grows the next day. So, there's just so much that they can do, and if they hadn't got to you yet, they'll get to you eventually. And that's it.
Councilman Reed?
I got to comment on what Councilwoman Toles said earlier. I looked over at Bob, and I've got to say, growing old is wonderful in some respects, but Cindy, it hurts. It hurts. And Bob looked at me about the same time when you were talking about it. And y'all, nobody's mentioned it, but Andy Powell is making his last meeting today. What in the world can we say? What can we? I've got mixed emotions. I really do. But he's going to give me an opportunity tomorrow night at 5:30 to say my opinion.
Be careful what you wish for.
I know. 20-something years of typewritten abuse. Typewritten abuse. No, I will say, and the best thing I can say about Andy is, Bob's been around, and some of y'all, when I would come out with some of the dumbest, stupidest things in the world, probably, or I was fighting some cause that wasn't really worthy, no reflection on you, of course, Mr. Worthy. But I would walk to the mailbox or the paper box the next morning, and I'd be just like this until I got there, because I'd say, surely Andy hopefully didn't put out what I said. And probably 99 out of 110, he did not write what I said. So, thank you, Andy, for that, and I will have a piece for you tomorrow night. Anybody wants to show her?
Thank you, Ben, for bringing that up. And I did want to, before my comments, I did want to give Andy an opportunity to make comments. He is quite the public critic of the mayor council comment section of the meeting.
Please don't.
But I did want to give him an opportunity if he... Well, I will say this. Andy, you will be missed for sure. You know, 20-plus years, thank goodness I haven't been here for most of that, but I can tell you that my perception of Andy has always been that of fairness in reporting. He's always informed to the extent that I understand it, and he even goes as far as to reach out to us on occasion and advise us when we are missing for him. So, we really appreciate it, and Andy, again, you'll be missed for sure. But we know you won't go away. We know you'll be right there on the fringes, and we wouldn't have it any other way. Okay? And just a quick reminder regarding, this is going to be a busy week and a busy weekend. And so, just a quick reminder, we've talked about the Barbarian Challenge, that again is going to be held this weekend. And for those who don't know, the city of Gaston now owns the rights to that event. So, this is an opportunity for us to make sure that it's put on in a good fashion. The Juneteenth celebration, of course, which will be Saturday, the parade again starts at around 11:30, I believe, and then the event in and of itself is scheduled for a noon start. The Council on Aging's event is scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, from 9 until 1 o'clock, 1 P.M. I mean, 1 P.M., and there'll be several speakers. So, please, please, I've actually been, had the privilege of being a speaker at that event before, and that's a great bunch. I can tell you that that is a very good group, so that's a very good meeting. And of course, please don't forget Father's Day this weekend. Please don't forget. I think we've got a number of fathers up here, and they would appreciate it if we didn't forget that, get that date this Sunday. And with that, I want to, I just want to publicly recognize my father for just being there. My father was the best man at my wedding, and for the most part, he's been my best friend throughout life. And I probably wouldn't be sitting here had it not been for much of the work that my father put into my first campaign, and my second. So, I really do appreciate him and want to recognize him. If there's nothing else to come...
Council President, being the only woman on the council, I'd like to offer my apology. I should have said the first thing, Happy Father's Day to all fathers. So, I want to say Happy Father's Day to the fathers on the council and those that are in the audience and in the city of Gaston.
Too late. The damage is done now.
Check's in the mail.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion that we adjourn.